It's 4:50. We'll call the Board of Supervisors in the session. We'll start the meeting with the election canvas for a special election. The PIASta Mayor Tuesday, January 25th. You have Russ Fabb, 53 votes, write-ins, six. And for absentee, we have Russ Fabb with four and no write-ins.
Just a little different than the presidential election.
Now, we have a five o'clock.
That's why they put you in that chair. Is our official cameraman?
Our official cameraman.
Do I say?
Yep.
Right. He takes good pictures. I follow his Instagram.
I read it upside down.
I literally didn't know I had.
So you get to, yeah, you get, like, if everyone else decides, so nobody signs the certificate, just you and Kevin, they all sign it.
Okay. I know. Lucky, lucky.
The recess until five o'clock?
The second. We have a motion and a second recess till five o'clock, at which time we'll start with their Disabilities Council work session. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. We're in recess till five.
I think that'd be one.
Is there any sound?
Mary, there is sound. We're on recess right now until five o'clock.
We have Kyle going to call the meeting to order. Go ahead, Kyle, to say order. Perfect. Board of Supervisors is in session. We have a five o'clock work session with the Disabilities Council members for a program update. I will turn it over to our Disabilities Director, Dr. Anne Cameron, and Kyle.
Thank you Supervisor Potoff. I am going to turn the opening of this meeting over to Kyle Stump, who lives in Dubuque and is a Dubuque County Appointed Council Member.
Good evening to you, Kyle.
Kyle, turn around. Show it.
The camera's right there, too, if you want to pull Anne right up a little to the top. Close.
Thank you for having the Disabilities Council here. Says, "Thank you for listening."
And with that, Kyle, thank you so much. You may sit down now. Thank you. An historic moment, and I thank each of the Board of Supervisors for allowing me the privilege of being a very small part of this group and a couple of members that are not here today. Before you, we have the first time ever presenting to the Board of Supervisors the Dubuque County Disabilities Council. Can we turn to the next slide, please? Actually, the first slide would be great. There we go. Now the next slide. So, this is an opportunity for me and the council to provide a brief update to the Board of Supervisors about what we've been doing as a group since you created this council beginning in July of 2021. I think, you know, I'm thinking overall, what are the takeaways? The council is active. It's engaged. It's thriving. You can see here, we've had, we have some incredibly engaged members that you have appointed who are showing up at their preference monthly, not every other month. Right away, they said, "No, we don't want to, we don't want to meet every other month. We've got too much to do." And so this group here and some other people that are not here made that decision to meet more frequently. This group is determined to be a decisive resource for the Board of Supervisors and for the people of Dubuque County that have interest in disabilities. And they are on target to create a strategic plan. Next slide, please. As I said, unprecedented historical moment for the county, and I'm just so very, very proud to be part of this moment. Next slide, please. So, this is the full list of our appointed council members. I'm not going to go through introductions here just because of time, but everyone that is part of the council as appointed member, you are valued, you are welcomed, you belong, and you are making a difference, and you will continue to make a difference. Please continue the slides. So, more for the, a little dry statistics here. We have 18 appointed members out of a total 21. I believe we have two or three people that are preparing their applications for consideration as we speak. Word is getting out about the council and about how dynamic the meetings are and the conversations that we have every month. We do have people with diverse disabilities in the group. We have people from different parts of Dubuque County, not enough yet from out county, but time will, time will make that difference because we truly want people that are living outside of Dubuque City, the city of Dubuque, to be part of this and to be included in the conversation. We are actively recruiting. The members that are part of the council are doing their own recruiting and personal networking to bring potential candidates to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration. We still aim to have at least two of these positions represented by people who identify as coming from diverse racial or ethnic backgrounds, cultural backgrounds. I'm not working hard enough because we've not been successful, so I really need to do more in this area, but it has been a priority. It will continue to be a priority. We have 17 advocacy positions on the council, and those are defined as members that have a lived experience of having a disability or they are a family member of someone who has a disability. Other positions can be people that just have an interest, professional people that are, have no personal identity but are in the helping professions. Leadership of the council is as yet unformed by the council members' preference. Again, this is an unprecedented, I'm not surprised that instead of having one or two people actually to be co-chairs of this group, the council unanimously voted to delay appointment or voting elections for leadership until they could get to know each other better and better understand each other's strengths and also to be aligned with what the council is going to be doing as determined by the strategic plan. This patience is admirable, and I was just, again, just not surprised, but very proud of this group that chose patience over jumping to leadership. Leadership model, when it is determined, will be two co-chairs that have a lived experience with disabilities, one cognitive, intellectual, developmental disability, another disability of another sort, so that we have some leadership opportunities for people that may not have regular opportunities in their life to be leaders. And we have received two resignations to date, both on a personal level, and then the second one was a job change, taking the person out of Dubuque County. Next slide, please. So, the council decided to create a new mission, and I will read it here. We read it every meeting, and if I'm lucky, I read the right one, right? Every now and then, something sneaks in that's from yesteryear. "To represent the perspectives of people with disabilities to the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors and to actively seek change in policies and practice that create more inclusive opportunities." And there should be a which. "Dismantle barriers for people with disabilities in Dubuque County." And I will note that that was a fiercely robust conversation of this group to make sure we got it right. And I would come back to my office and I would take their ideas and merge them together like turkey and bean soup, and then I'd take it back to them, and they'd say, "Well, it's pretty good, but it's not good enough. Let's get it right." And that's just the way it needs to be. So, as I mentioned, we've been meeting monthly at the request of the council members. We do thank Hillcrest Family Services for providing us with accessible meeting space in Fellowship Hall. We've been privileged to have two of the Board of Supervisors. All of you are always invited. Knowing your busy schedules, we know that you can't always make it. You're always invited. But Fellowship Hall is an old chapel, and it's a big circle. And so we're able to do social distancing there. It is easy in and easy out for people with mobility impairments, but the circle is not a power dynamic. Everybody in that circle has equal access to power just by the setup of the room. And I think it's really been interesting to see how people have really risen to the opportunities of being part of it. We are currently meeting through Zoom just because of winter and COVID concerns until further notice. I've been creating meeting materials in typical and alternative format for people that may not identify as being typical readers. Alternative format is usually used by pictures indicating whatever it is we're talking about. We've had 19 unduplicated visitors that attended our meetings, and more and more continue to come. And one of the things that really struck me is thinking about the council is how welcoming they are. And Sue Ellen, I would like for you to come up here and just talk about your experience and how welcoming. Come on over. You need this. You have to be famous, right?
Okay. Hi, Sue Ellen Flynn. And I'm on the council. I got on, actually, the board before the meeting before because I have a son with severe, serious mental illness. So, I was really kind of excited when they did go with all the disabilities because it includes everybody. And a lot of people don't think about mental illness when they think about disabilities. And so I'm really excited. I mean, everybody just, you know, people come in and you can see some people who have obvious disabilities, and they probably wonder why I'm there, but everybody's been really welcoming and, and, you know, and included, you know, people with mental illness, because obviously some people with disabilities have mental illness, too. So, it's been, it's been really, really good and exciting, and I'm really excited about the survey that we're going to do because as being on the council, I don't know all the problems that people with physical disabilities or intellectual disabilities have, and it'll help me be a better council member to understand their issues. And for some people, like, you know, with physical disabilities, we help them understand people with mental, you know, and brain health issues. So, I'm really excited about this and getting this out into the community and reaching out to everybody. So, I think that in a way that, and one thing I like about it, too, is we did decide to add disability and mental health issues because I think a lot of people don't think about that when we put about disability. So, I think that'll be welcoming people from the community with mental health issues to think about that and to answer the survey and to, you know, talk about their issues and that. So, I'm really excited about this, so.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, and the tone of our meetings are totally participatory. Eric Thompson usually, and Kyle, I think you both do this, but, you know, you're actively making motions to begin the meeting, to adjourn the meeting if we've got an issue and it's something that can be stated succinctly. You know, we really do encourage participation of all the members. And we also encourage participation of our guests and visitors. So, during discussions, we welcome comments. We don't shut people out. If they have, we want them to come and engage, and we want them to be part of the discussions. When it does come to a vote, though, only the council members are allowed to vote. So, we do keep those lines. You know, they're not as formal as, as, you know, the Board of Supervisors as it needs to be, but this way, we're really trying to engage and include people. Next slide, please. Okay, this was exciting. We created a logo. I really liked the logo. It's D C D C, and it's colorful. You can identify it easily. Whether or not you read or not, it's something that you sort of remember. And thanks to Tanya and, you know, our Human Resources, Resources Karen, Karen Gerhardt has been, they've both been great about putting this up and some messaging on the Dubuque County Facebook pages. So, we're getting that out. Next slide, please. More activities. So, we were, we were on our way, remember? We were on our way to create a strategic plan. Remember the chair exercise when I had you all float up to the front and put down what your, your key issue was? Well, guess what? Nothing came out of that because all of you were interested in all different, there was no clear path. It was like, it was not, everybody said, "We're going to employment, and that's where we're going to be." No, no, no. It was, it was different issues, and, and there was no clear sense. And earlier in the conversation, the council members had really talked about the importance, Sheriff, had talked about the importance of collecting data and understanding, you know, get some information. Sure, this is a very expert body of people that live in and around Dubuque, Dubuque County, but they're smart enough that they know that they don't know everything. And what's important to them, like Sue Ellen, you said, one of the extraordinary things about this group is it's not what's important to one person is also important to all the rest of the members because it's important to that one person. So, the agendas are not only self-interest agendas here. And because of that, you know, and the chair exercise with all those ideas was a great indicator to me that indeed, we needed to do something before we come, we came up with a strategic plan. And so the idea was, what are we going to do? We're going to do a disabilities and mental health survey. Okay, I need a little more excitement there. And so we are in the final stages of this, and it's a, it's a simple survey, but we think it's going to be an impactful survey. We're going to get, we've got the communications, which Supervisor McDonough has graciously agreed to be on. I don't know if your schedule allows for that time, but we've got some really key people. Collins Ebo, or Ibo, I forget how to say his name, from the city has agreed to be on there. And we've got many volunteers and council members that are going to convene next Friday and decide, how are we going to get the word out of them, this? But it's asking the people all through Dubuque County, what are the issues that are important to them relating to disability? Who are they? Are they a person with a disability? Are they a caregiver? Are they a family person? Are they a professional? Are they a bus driver? Doesn't matter. You can answer the survey and tell us what's important. Based on the results of that, which will also be in large print, simplified language, and Spanish and Marshallese, thinking about Guatemala, and but I haven't got there yet, I haven't got a translator yet. We really wanted to ask the community to weigh in on this. With that data, we'll be able to come up with information to guide us in the strategic plan. Okay, next slide. Last word on activities. This is where I'd like for Bill Stump to come up, and this is about some of the priority issues that the council has discovered and explored and discussed. So, you are limited to two minutes, Bill. I'm telling you.
My reputation precedes me. Bill Stump, also known as Kyle's dad, and I wear that with a real badge of honor. Kyle does have limited verbal skills, but I don't, whether that's for better or for worse. We'll see. Good evening, and thank you, as Kyle pointed out, for having us come in and for listening to us tonight. And I'm going to be fairly brief, fairly. We'll see how that goes, huh, Kyle? You call me out? Okay. The strategic plan, some of the things that we discussed, and a lot of those are highlighted on the slide in terms of things like education, housing, transportation, jobs. I would put an emphasis on competitive integrated employment, which is folks with disabilities making above minimum wage as they should. And Kyle is employed in competitive integrated employment, and brag a little bit, huh, Kyle? He is now making almost a dollar an hour more than minimum wage, so he's a valued employee at Papa John's Pizza. Overall, community accessibility, we always look at, and, and physical barriers and. Overall, community accessibility, we always look at, and, and physical barriers and social barriers and things like ableism. And these are all things that I think need, we can expand on. And obviously healthcare. We also discussed making sure everyone is at the table and Ann pointed that out. Disability intersects with many other marginalized groups and that is way too often overlooked. And, and they have a unique message to bring to the table. And everybody is welcome and provides that unique perspective and we want to grow that. And we're actively doing that. And I do want to take a, a second to thank Dubuque County for hiring Ann Cameron Williams. And she approached me to be, consider signing up for the council. And I, I get all the asks to do a lot of disability-related things, local, state, nationally. I, I will say no, believe it or not. And I will say no if it doesn't seem like something's that, that, that's gonna really produce something. And immediately when I met Ann, I, I knew that, that her, her passion was there to do that. And so it was, it was a hard yes right from the get-go. So, and I think Kyle will agree with me on that. So we don't miss too many meetings, don't we? I'm not sure if we missed any. But I'm gonna close a little bit and, and switch gears and, and put my other hat on. I currently serve as the Board Secretary for Disability Rights Iowa. And, and we had our board meeting on Friday in Des Moines. And, and y'all have this pamphlet. Council members will also receive this. This is hot off the presses. And, and what it is, is it's a quick check for disability accessibility standards for vaccination clinics. They have, from what I understand, been provided to county departments of health. But if you hear that they don't have it, I can get more. It's a pretty cool thing, I think. And, and what we were told at our meeting is that there is one printer in Des Moines that can print something this long. And so we used it because felt it was important to have the ruler on there. So even things like spacing chairs. I would say even to Kevin Durgato that this is something that could provide tips for polling places. And, and sometimes they're little things, but they're oftentimes overlooked. So I was really impressed when I seen this and I said, "Can I take some of these?" And this was timely. So definitely wanted to share that with you. But, but there's some really, really cool stuff on there. And I personally like the place for notes because oftentimes with these things, there's no place for notes. So you do chicken scratch all over and then you don't always remember the things you want. So share it with others. If anybody needs more copies of it, I can certainly get those for you. So again, thank you for the time. Did I make it?
No.
Okay, well, I tried.
It's okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bill.
And so the next slide, please. So these are some of the, really quickly, the council webpage. We've had two great, thank you to the Telegraph Herald for articles and editorial pieces. Thank you, Tanya, for the Facebook pages. And we're doing event postings on the Telegraph Herald. And I'm in the process of creating a more, I don't know, comprehensive email list kind of thing. One of the things that goes along with the public awareness, and Jason, you wanna come on up? Is the importance of including community organizations and businesses and schools in these conversations. Jason is an awesome person who's got a new role at Vogrehab, right? We also have Margie Waywood back there from Goodwill in Dubuque and Deb DiVannuto from LSI. Thank you, I'm always, and there might be somebody else here that I'm forgetting, I apologize. But we've got universities, we've got, we've got a lot of really community partners. Could you speak briefly to the importance of our community partners and who else we need in the room?
Briefer than Bill?
Yes.
So as Ann said, I'm Jason Ruble. I am the supervisor for Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation here in Dubuque. We covered Dubuque County and as well as Clayton and Delaware. But yeah, and we do have some other partners such as Margie and Deb here. And Michelle Schmidt is also appointed board member, or yeah, not appointed board member, board appointed member from Hills and Dales. But just having, you know, those community partnerships and getting people involved with the Disabilities Council, it, it, it helps just, number one, to broaden the depth of the knowledge that we can bring to the table. People with lived experiences with disabilities are the experts on it. But at the same time, we all in our professions deal with this on a day-to-day basis. And no, the people who, we know the people who have the disabilities. We know the other partners, we know the resources around town. And it is fundamental to us being able to get some of these initiatives going, to have the right people and players in place, such as, well, I had, with the survey, which I think is, I, I'm just really excited about this survey. So I had reached out to our Bureau Chief in Des Moines and found out if we could disseminate that information through our office to people with disabilities. And they were, it came back, they checked with our staff attorney even, and it came back a hard yes. So we're gonna be helping with that. And I know that the other providers and things would be willing to help with that as well. So, you know, that's just one example of how we can benefit by having these community partners onboard and expanding that. I think it'd be great if we could get, you know, people who do mental health therapy, people who, from the hospitals, all these people involved, just so that the more, the more people we've got at the table who have ideas and who have resources and who know how to get things done, the more people we've got onboard, the more we're gonna be able to do. But first thing will be that strategic plan, so we know its direction, we're headed. Thank you for your time. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much, Jason.
Let, let, next page, please. Thank you. Okay, so I know we only have a couple of minutes left. We would like to entertain any questions from the Board of Supervisors you have to the council. Anything at all that you would like to, to ask?
Jay? Well, first I want to say thank you for your participation, for volunteering and for, for caring about your loved ones and the community. So appreciate that. My question would be to, to the group, what, what needs do you feel or think are unmet at this time on a small or high level that the Board of Supervisors might be able to, to help you with? If there are any that you know now, feel free to share or certainly contact any one of us at any time. We're, we're here to serve, we're here to help. And generally speaking, we're in a good position to help.
Supervisor Wickham, what I'd like to do is take this question back and have a little time to process it at our next meeting, which is coming up next week. And then with your permission, get back to you because sometimes thinking quickly, right on the spot, is something that we like to just take a little time to make sure everybody's engaged. Is that okay with everybody? We're gonna think about it? Any other questions?
Supervisor McDonough?
Well, I think that's a great question that Jay poses, what can we do? But I think you, you all know the ripples that you are causing, the impact that goes out from what you're doing, from your participation. Today, we had conservation here and they were talking about needing resources to build ponds that are accessible for everyone, to build lavatories and latrines that are accessible to everyone. So you have made the county be accountable and inclusive. Now, we have a lot of work to do, but thank you for raising the conversation. And of course, the city is also, I think, wanting to be engaged in this probably overlooked area. Also, and the essential region, we see the ripple going out to the other counties about mental health and the interconnectedness with disabilities. So it's, it is thank you to you for your willingness, I think, to be brave and, and Kyle to step forward and hold the sign. Because that's wherever you, wherever you are, that's the beauty of this, that you're, you're welcome here. So this is government at its very best and intended to be this way.
I would echo my colleagues' feelings. I want to thank all of yous for being a part of this and making this happen and making it work. It's nice to see Kyle and Bill and everybody involved that wanna make it change. We need help knowing what to do to make that change. So we're gonna be looking to you to help us make the change. Thank you all very much.
I think we're up to the task. Now, Eric, I had asked you before, as we close, I had asked you before if you had anything to say in terms of the question of, what does it feel like for you to come to the Disability Council every single month? What is that like for you? Do you wanna, do you wanna say it and I can repeat it? Opportunity? Expressing your feelings? You make the motions, don't you? Yes, you do. You do. Supervisors, I believe this group stands ready to help the county in any way it can. I have no doubt that should conservation or any other county-affiliated group call on this group for its expert opinions, that they would rise to that opportunity and rise to the opportunity to serve the county with their expertise. So Kyle, why don't you come on up here one more time? You get to close the session out, okay? Go show that to everybody. Go show, walk, walk it around.
For those on Zoom, it says, "Thank you for listening." You bet, Kyle. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ann, and thank everybody with the Disabilities Council.
Ann? How does that work? Morning, I didn't know, stop or stop. Okay, good. Let's get confused. You, Tom? Motion to recess for three minutes?
Second. Motion in a second to recess for three minutes. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Sue Ellen, thanks.
Thank you, Sue Ellen. At 5:34, we'll call the Board of Supervisors back into session after a short recess. Start the meeting for public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. I don't believe we have anyone in chambers wishing to speak. Do we have anyone on Zoom? Moving along, we'll go to proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. Next, we have the approval of minutes of meeting of January 18th and 20th and January 24th and the January 24th budget meeting.
We do one motion? I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
And I will second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the meetings. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we'll move to consent items. The following items will be acted upon by a single motion without separate discussion unless a supervisor requests that a specific item be considered separately. We have the Treasurer's Semiannual Report and a beer permit for Dusty Rogers to Dubuque Sports Complex.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items for the Treasurer's report and the beer permit.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent items. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have procurement procedures. We have a proof of publication.
Make a motion to approve the proof of publication.
And I will second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. Next, we'll have the bid openings for the Sheriff's 855 roof project. Go to.
Good evening, everybody. We have five bids this evening. The first bid is from Geezy Roofing.
Is there bonds required with that?
And the bond is attached. Second bid is from Jim Geezy Commercial Roofing. Their bid bond is present. Their bid total is $330,000. $330,000. Third bid is from Blackhawk Roof Company. Their bid is for $430,000. That's $430,000. And I do not see a bid bond attached with this bid. Fourth bid is from Geisler Brothers. Their bid bond is attached. Bid price of $297,920. That's $297,920. And the final bid from Midwest Storm Company. Bid price of $297,200. That's $297,200 and their bid bond is attached. That concludes the bids opening.
I'll make a motion to receive the bids and refer them to the Sheriff's Department for their evaluation and possible recommendation to the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the bids and forward them to the Sheriff's Office for further review. All in favor, signify by aye. for further review. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe. We'll go to public hearings. There are no public hearings for this meeting. Move to approval of Platts. There are no Platts for approval at this meeting. We have action items. The board may approve, deny, or table any action items. First, we have a resolution to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the hiring of deputies, assistants, and clerks. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a resolution to approve the lease agreement with St. Elias Greek Orthodox Church for Sunny Crest Manor. Context, we have Danny on. Danny Edema?
Hello?
Hey, Danny.
Hi. So I followed up on the items that we had discussed last week, and they did take out the snow removal. That is not our responsibility down there. In addition, we discussed the addition of a lead person. That, when I discussed that with our other ICFID, the workshop people, they had asked that that be a person that would be interviewable for that job and that they receive a $2 while they're doing that job increase, kind of like a shift differential. So that total would approximately be about $4,000 a year. We would still be saving quite a bit in the long run.
Any questions, Anne?
Thank you, Danny, for getting those answers for us.
No problem.
Jay, you have any questions?
I'm all good. Looks like a great program. Very excited for your residents to participate.
Yeah, so once we get it up and running, we'd love for everybody to come down and see it.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Looking for a motion to approve the lease agreement?
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement with St. Elias Greek Orthodox Church in Sunny Crest Manor.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. It carries. Next, we have a resolution to approve the Sunny Crest COVID vaccination policy. Turn it over to Dawn for context.
Thank you, Chair Potoff. The Supreme Court had heard cases regarding this and also the vaccination mandate that would be administered through OSHA. OSHA would be the one that would cover all employees in the county other than Sunny Crest. And so they did rule that down, and OSHA has since has withdrawn those emergency standards. But the Supreme Court did move forward and allow the CMS to mandate vaccinations for any, well, it's a voluntary one, but noncompliance would mean that you would be in jeopardy of losing your Medicaid or Medicare funding for your facility. So knowing that and that that is a very large percentage of the revenue that comes into Sunny Crest, Danny and I have been working on this, and we actually completed this late last calendar year, and we pushed pause knowing that there were several lawsuits. But now that the Supreme Court has heard it and we have gotten additional guidance from CMS regarding their compliance dates, we are proposing this vaccination policy to be put in place immediately. One of the very first states for compliance is coming up as of February 14th, and we are confident we will be in 100% compliance by then if this policy does pass. And CJ has reviewed this policy and has no issue with moving forward with that.
If we were to lose the Medicare money so much with that.
It's all but one resident's care funded through the, so we only have one private resident up there.
So can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I did look that up. It would be about nine and a half million dollars. So that would be a pretty extreme amount. We are within, I mean, we have eighty to almost eighty-four percent. We did have three more employees get their first vaccination, so we're going to be closer to that. We do obviously have the exemptions, medical and/or religious exemptions. That is obviously the responsibility of the staff member to fill out and get back to me, and I'm reviewing those. What I will say is, like Dawn had said, we'll be in 100% compliance with this, I believe, by February 14th. We actually only have to have above 80% vaccinated by that time. However, I would like it to be completed because on March 15th, then that ups that rate to 90%. And we have to have a plan in place. This is the best plan in place that we have, is to go ahead and be in complete compliance by the February 14th date.
Okay, thank you very much, Danny.
Yep.
I have had issues with the mandates. I'm not going to deny it. But they have us in a situation where we either move forward with it or we lose all the funding, which we can't afford to lose either. So I understand the importance of vaccinations at Sunny Crest. All of our residents are disabled, handicapped, so we do need to protect them also. Any comments, Jay?
I'll start with a question. So what does this document and resolution do for the county related to our compliance on the administrative rule related to Medicaid/Medicaid reimbursements?
So within that first 30 days, CMS said that we demonstrate compliance if we have policies and procedures are developed and implemented for ensuring all facility staff, regardless of clinical responsibility or patient or resident contact, are vaccinated for COVID-19. So this is that first step to ensure that we have a policy in place before February 14th. And then that policy itself walks through the dates and then also the exemption. You won't be approving those exemption notices or forms that employees are able, if they choose not to get vaccinated for religious or medical reason, they will complete those and they would be exempt from the vaccination mandate, and then we would be in compliance as well.
And we have several of those on file.
Correct, yep.
Tell me more about the medical and religious exemptions and how they fall into this administrative rule.
So they.
Part of it.
Yep. Part of the rule is that you can allow for exemptions for both of these. In both of the exemption forms, we did receive, they had templates out for us to use. CMS and OSHA both did there for that. Danny had a little bit more information. She passed along to me today that they're really, if they come in and they do any kind of type of compliance review, they're going to focus on the medical exemptions, the religious ones, and we're doing that as well as long as the employee signs it. We are taking that they are testing to it truthfully and not requesting additional documentation. The medical one, the employee's treating physician is required to provide document or fill out part of the form as well.
The medical form, though, however, it has to have why the person cannot take that, and it has to be a treating physician. So the DIA surveyors would look more into the medical one than the religious. From what I have gathered from the meetings I've been on, they've discussed the fact that they will not essentially question the religious exemptions, but they would definitely question the medical exemptions. But we have offered both to each and every individual who is not looking to get vaccinated.
So if I'm understanding this, in short, all those that are unvaccinated could just claim a religious exemption, and that will be allowed, and we'd be in compliance?
That is correct. Yes.
But doesn't really change the health perspective of this?
No. And our residents are 100% vaccinated and almost completely boosted also. So our residents have also protected themselves in that aspect. I, you know, I'm not going to debate anybody at Sunny Crest as to whether or not they have to get vaccinated or not. We just need the policy in place with the exemptions in place, so then when DIA comes in to survey us, we are not in denial of payment if we're not in compliance.
Danny, it's Anne. How many positives do we have right now?
We have one current resident positive on our ICFID, and then we had two staff member positives this morning and one contract staff. So we are wearing, obviously, our PPE. When we do have a positive, if it's a resident positive, we are wearing extra PPE. So, and we are continuing to test. We have on hand probably about 1,800 tests, so we are in a very high positivity rate right now. So we are testing twice a week. When we're in outbreak, we have to test every three to seven days. So we are testing very frequently, and as our positivity rate is high, we will even continue to go above and beyond some of the testing. As far as our unvaccinated staff wouldn't need to be tested if we weren't in outbreak status, but with the transmission rate being so high in the community, that's probably not the best. We are catching it because of testing. So, and with our residents at this time asymptomatic, you know, and I hope that continues.
Thank you, Danny.
Yep.
I think further.
Other than just to thank you, Danny, to you and your staff, once again, for doing everything you can to keep both the employees and the residents safe there at Sunny Crest. Greatly appreciate the work that you're doing.
No problem.
Anne?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the COVID vaccination policy for Sunny Crest. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Have a great night.
You too.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the purchase of service agreement with Travel Dubuque.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of service agreement with Travel Dubuque. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a duplicate warrant for the city of Durango.
Move approval.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the duplicate warrant for the city of Durango. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a duplicate warrant for Aiden.
I will make a motion to approve that just a part.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the duplicate warrant. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution approving the release of mortgage agreements for Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission. We have here for some context to that.
Thank you, Supervisor Potoff. This is Ed Raiber. ECIA Director Kelly Depp Meyer is on the call. In case you have any specific questions, she has some longitudinal background on this. There's a memo in your packet from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission sort of explaining this. This came as a request from them. Over a decade ago, in 2008, there was some flood recovery money, and the state of Iowa divided the state in several regions. Eastern Iowa is one that includes Dubuque County as well as a lot of other counties in eastern Iowa. And at the time, Dubuque County volunteered to be the fiscal agent for this, doesn't take on any responsibility, but just in the way that federal floods flowed, I believe that they apparently flowed through this organization. And from time to time after that, I believe that there were, this was a programs to help repair people's homes. So there would be a mortgage attached, and I believe that they would just time off because that mortgage would be attached if they lived in the house for five years. It just decreased. There's a couple that are highlighted here that are outside of that category and had some other issues, and they're asking for that release, not because they didn't live an appropriate amount of time, but apparently there was a fire and some insurance payments, and they're just looking to have that, this mortgage expunged from that property. So if I've missed anything, I'm sure Kelly could add to that.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. We have a resolution to approve the contract with Global Comm Technologies for Farley Shop Project. For access doors, card access doors.
I am. Good evening. Global Comm meets all the requirements. They are a reputable vendor. We've worked with them in the past for this sort of technology. I would recommend approval by the board to approve the contract.
Nathan, Supervisor, welcome. Just a quick question for you here. So I know that we've been asked correctly, if I'm not saying this right. We do have security cameras out there. We do have Wi-Fi out there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And previous board agreed not to go to the next level, or to doors, regardless of that decision. My question to you today is, if you had to tell me what's the benefit of having door monitors and motion detectors and basically investing $22,000 for that? What's the benefits? Why do it?
The core benefit is further enhancing the security and the protection of the property that is within that facility. Yes, there are cameras, but from a physical security standpoint, this will allow the same ID that they currently use at West Campus to lock/unlock the doors at that location. The system is currently tied into the camera system. That's new in the last two, three months here. So if you were to ever do an audit, let's say there was an issue, you can actually pull up the door access system and get a 30-second clip of when somebody badged in. It'll pull that from the video system and link it. So it further enhances the physical security out there.
Thank you for that. Okay, appreciate that.
My main point is just that maybe it's just consistency. I just remember when we did the Farley Shop, whatever it was, three years ago, I can't remember how many years ago it was, but three years ago, this was an item that was discussed, and the board at that time voted 3-0 to remove this component out. And I know I was the only one at that board at the time, but that's why I'll be voting no for this at this point.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second it. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Two to one. Next, we move to, thank you, Nathan. I'm sorry. Did you have something?
No, I just said thanks, Nathan.
Communications correspondence at the board will receive and file without taking action. First would be an annexation notice from the city of Sageville. We do all with one, okay? And manure management plan from New Dawn Pork, number 68845, City of Dubuque Urban Renewal Plan Letter 2022 dot one, and City of Dubuque Urban Renewal Plan Letter 2022 dot two, and Mercy One Mobile Medical Unit Update.
I will make a motion to receive and file all those documents.
Second.
Have a motion to receive and file communications. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. To go to appointments, open vacancies for information only, informational only. Questions on any of that? Move to personnel requisitions. There are no personnel requisitions for approval at this meeting. We'll move into the public comment section. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries, and the Iowa code prohibits the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. We do not have anyone in board chambers and no one on Zoom. entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. We stand adjourned.